Si todos pueden tomar sus asientos y se sientan, podemos empezar. El primer tema esta noche es una serie de audiencias públicas sobre varios proyectos vinculados que formaban parte del presupuesto capital. El primero es la demolición de propiedades abandonadas para abordar el despliegue en la cantidad de 1 millón de dólares. Anyo que quiera abordar el Consejo con respecto a ese tema, por favor, inscribanse con el sheriff de la ciudad. Por favor, indiquen su nombre y dirección para el registro cuando comiencen a hablar. Y hay un límite de cinco minutos. Te daré un aviso de un minuto. ¿Alguien? ¿El señor sheriff?
El primer orador de esta noche es Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. Vengo a favor de la autorización de este acuerdo para la demolición de las propiedades abandonadas. Como saben, este gobierno y su equipo han tenido un gran registro en la demolición, las edificios dilapidados y despliegueados. Creo que es perfecto el tiempo con el revueltas y todo lo demás que viene, ya saben, como parte de la reevaluación. Si tienes un edificio dilapidado o propiedad despliegueada cerca de ti que dañó tu valor, por nosotros deshacernos de estas propiedades y conseguir que la gente compre estas propiedades y redemover estas propiedades, no solo estamos ayudando nuestro ingreso de impuestos, sino también estamos ayudando a nuestros ciudadanos en el centro de Waterbury. Así que, ya saben, 1 millón de dólares en la edad de hoy no suena como mucho. En este momento, la gente podría decir que es mucho. Esto es solo el centavo en el bolsillo, pero es algo que nos mantienen, lo que hemos estado tratando de hacer, limpiando nuestra ciudad con edificios despliegueados y desamparados. Y pediría que acepten eso. Gracias.
El próximo orador de la calle 96, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 96 Downstreet. Solo quería hablar sobre esta demolición, la demolición de las propiedades abandonadas. En Waterville tenemos virujones, y esto probablemente sería parte de su agenda. Esperaba que algún día podríamos conseguir ese edificio, el despliegueado, y lo derribar. Han habido personas que entraron allí. Han habido personas, ya saben, robando cosas de allí, lo que queda ahí, tratando de quemarlo. Y si usted sabe dónde está el taller de fuego de Waterville, está directamente, casi por la calle. Y en cuanto a 1 millón de dólares, quiero decir, no estoy en contra, ya saben, de lo que estamos haciendo. Solo como contribuyente, me pregunto, ¿de dónde va todo este dinero? Entiendo que venga del gobierno federal o del estado, pero la cuestión fundamental, la gente en la audiencia, todos los que están ahí tienen que saber, es que el contribuyente es el dinero. Y, ya saben, vamos a pasar por todos estos audiencias públicas en las que quiero hablar, pero creo que esto es ya un trato listo. Entiendo porque nunca he visto ningún trabajo de dinero en esto. Nadie llegó a Waterville, a Waterville, con todo el respeto, y llevó cualquier trabajo. No he visto nada al respecto. Y cuánto dinero costará, y tal vez será una sobrecarga. Y si es así, entonces, ¿qué vamos a hacer? ¿Ya vamos a poner esa carga en la espalda de los contribuyentes del centro de Waterbury? Quiero decir, como saben, nuevamente, apoyo lo que ustedes están haciendo, pero creo que deberíamos ser un poco más conservadores en cuanto al dinero. Y ustedes, señoras y señores, en el Consejo de los Aldermen, este es un año electoral, y todos tienen una responsabilidad hacia todos sus contribuyentes y todos sus distritos desde el 71 hasta el 75. Y ahora los aros, ¿vale? Así que apoyé a todos los aldeanos por distrito, así que le pido a ustedes que escuchen al público y hagan su trabajo. Gracias.
Señor presidente, ese es el último orador de esta noche para ese tema.
Gracias. Con eso, cerraremos esa audiencia pública y abriremos la audiencia pública con respecto al proyecto Greenway de Waterbury Phase 1 en la cantidad de 9.500.000 dólares. Nuevamente, si quieren hablar de ese tema, por favor, inscribanse con el sheriff de la ciudad. Indiquen su nombre y dirección para el registro. ¿Señor sheriff?
Primer orador de la calle 11, Lawrence DePillo. Y este es también el tema número 12 de su agenda esta noche, así como, supongo, una presentación que se va a dar esta noche respecto al proyecto Greenway Phase 1. El set de Greenway es para el acoso de 9.500 millones de dólares. Hay un número de preguntas que van con esto. Primero de todo, no vi nada en la documentación que establece cuánto de este acoso va a ser la responsabilidad de los ciudadanos de Waterbury directamente, y cuánto de este acoso viene a través de donaciones estatales o federales. Si estuviera en los documentos, no lo vi, y tal vez esta noche los contribuyentes puedan recibir esa información. Sé que tenemos que acoso el proyecto completo, pero la pregunta principal es, ¿cuál es la tasa de reembolso del estado y del gobierno federal? La segunda es, ¿tiene una cuenta completa? Este ha sido un proyecto que ha estado en marcha ahora por probablemente más de diez años aquí en el centro de Waterbury. Comenzó con dinero que llegó al DEEP de McDermott, que era parte de los fines por lo que luego era una violación de descarga al río. Subsecuentemente a eso, hubo donaciones estatales que fueron dadas a la Comisión de Greenway para facilitar esta fase 1 del Greenway. También tuvimos al vicepresidente de Transportes de Estados Unidos que se encontró y también prometió fondos a este proyecto de Greenway. Así que la pregunta para los aldeanos, la cuenta de todo el dinero que fue puesto en este proyecto, parte de ello fue a consultores, pero creo que antes de que 9.500 millones de dólares o cualquier dinero sea acoso, debería haber una cuenta completa desde el día uno, con el dinero de McDermott del DEEP hasta hoy. Y no solo la cuenta de ese dinero, sino también, ¿cuál es la parte de la ciudad y cuánto va a ser estatal y federal, más o menos de lo que ya recibimos? De hecho, una buena pregunta sería, ¿de dónde se cuenta ese dinero y en qué cuenta está en el presupuesto? ¿Y ese dinero está en un fondo que ha estado ganando interés durante todos estos años por lo que queda? Terceramente, este proyecto entero fue detenido hace un número de años atrás, no debido a la ley indiana encontrada en la propiedad que iba a convertirse en un parque y la área donde el lanzamiento de barco y los otros lanzamientos de kayak iban a ser, pero la espera fue del Departamento de Transportes aquí en el estado porque la pared que realmente apoya la calle South Main estaba colapsando. Y dijeron que el Greenway no podía avanzar hasta que esa pared fuera completamente reemplazada. Ese fue el retraso. Luego de eso, llegó el parque, luego llegó la ley indiana, pero la razón original de que el Greenway se detuvo fue debido a la pared. Ahora, ¿ha tomado el Departamento de Transportes la propiedad de esa pared y van a repararla a su costa antes de que la ciudad ponga en marcha el Greenway? ¿O una vez que el Greenway está en juego, ¿va a ser la posición del estado, es ahora el Greenway de Waterbury, somos dueños del Greenway y somos dueños de todas las paredes retengadas a lo largo de la calle South Main? Y ahora los ciudadanos de Waterbury van a estar bajo la cuerda por estos millones y millones y millones de dólares para reemplazar estas paredes retengadas. Es un problema muy importante y necesita ser resuelto. Espero que sea parte de la presentación de esta noche, pero esa es una responsabilidad absolutamente importante para los ciudadanos de esta ciudad. Y si tomamos la propiedad de un Greenway y no estamos asegurando que el DEEP tenga esas paredes o esas paredes reforzadas por completo, entonces la responsabilidad de esta ciudad podría ser masiva hacia los contribuyentes. Y con eso, muchas gracias. Lo aprecio. El siguiente orador de la calle 96, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 96 Downstreet. Ya saben, he estado pensando, contemplando este Greenway por mucho tiempo. 9.500.000 dólares es un montón de dinero. Como dije antes, no quiero estar bajo la cuerda por todo esto, y no creo que los contribuyentes de Waterbury quieran estar bajo la cuerda tampoco. No estoy siendo facetista, solo estoy diciendo que tenemos que ver cómo gastamos nuestro dinero, ser más frugal en cómo gastamos nuestro dinero, y comprender lo que estamos haciendo y entenderlo porque no sé, ¿tenemos alguna seguridad allí? Porque he visto algunos Greenways en otras partes del estado, ya saben, he viajado bastante por el estado, y ustedes saben eso, y de lo que estoy involucrado, pero la cuestión fundamental es que realmente no veo mucha seguridad en muchos Greenways. Y estaba contemplando que deberíamos tener algún tipo de seguridad, si se quiere, especialmente alrededor de Waterbury, porque, ya saben, hemos estado teniendo mucho crimen últimamente, mucha gente robando autos, mucha gente tirando basura, si se quiere. Justo tuvimos muchas cosas con la gente limpiando las cosas para el Día del Mundo. Sé que mucha gente bajó donde iba el Greenway y encontraron un montón de cosas, solo gente tirando todo tipo de basura, si se quiere. Y no quiero escapar de esta audiencia pública, pero la cuestión fundamental es que tienes que asegurarte de que el dinero se gasta bien y tenemos que entender lo que vamos a hacer porque no estoy en el Consejo de los Aldermen, pero si lo fuese, estaría muy preocupado por la seguridad allí. Estaría muy preocupado por eso, porque, ya saben, he ido por muchos lugares diferentes y he visto muchas buenas ideas que la gente tiene, y estoy contento de que Miss Indianapolis esté aquí. He visto muchas innovaciones nuevas, nuevas ideas, y básicamente involucrarse en muchas cosas futurísticas en la forma de la energía solar. Y vi muchas luces que se ponen para la energía solar, perdón, en varios teléfonos, de esta manera de ser autodidactas. Sé que tal vez sea un poco caro, pero si ustedes van a gastar este tipo de dinero, tal vez deberían pensar en ponerlos en algo así, donde podamos tener algún tipo de iluminación allí. Y si la policía necesita ser notificada, sé que leí en algún lugar en Europa que tienen Greenways, que en realidad tienen un botón de pánico que podrían presionar si una mujer se está molestando o la gente se está robando o algo así. No estoy diciendo que alguien es malo en el centro de Waterbury, pero desafortunadamente tenemos personajes caminando por la noche. Ya se supuso un gran audiencia publica sobre este pan manejo. Y, ya saben, entiendo que la gente necesita dinero, la gente está desesperada, y si lees sobre el problema de la opio en Connecticut, no discrimina, va hacia todos. Y la gente se vuelve a dar, y hará cualquier cosa para, ya saben, para conseguir drogas y comprar drogas. Sabemos que tiene un buen oficial de policía aquí, él sabe de lo que estoy hablando. Es una cosa horrible lo que está pasando. Y tuvimos, ya saben, personas, ya saben, probablemente ya en el centro de Waterbury durante este año, o cuántos asesinatos tuvimos, ¿algunos ya? Vivo en Waterbury toda mi vida, nunca he visto algo así. Todo lo que estoy diciendo es que tienes que tener seguridad, y tiene que comenzar, y tienes que asegurar a la gente, especialmente nosotros, que pueden querer tomar nuestras bicicletas allí, o pueden querer caminar con nuestras familias y ir allí y asegurarse de que van a tener la ley de perdedores en force allí, no pueden tener a la gente corriendo por ahí. Y tienes que cuidar de los homeless, con todo el respeto. No pueden construir sus casas por todas partes y decir, bueno, van a venir aquí y golpear, discriminando contra nosotros. No, eso no me juega. La cuestión fundamental, si realmente quieres limpiar Waterbury, entonces trabajemos todos juntos. Otra cosa, nunca he visto los planes para el Greenway, ni me hubo invitado, ni me pregunté ni nada antes de ir a estas reuniones. Pero la cuestión fundamental es que tenemos que prestar atención a lo que la gente quiere en el centro de Waterbury, y tenemos que entender que realmente necesitan, ya saben, esto que necesitamos hacer por ellos. Y esto es algo que sé que la gente ha estado esperando, y agradezco a la gente que ha estado involucrado en esto por mucho tiempo, con el Greenway.
Un minuto, señor Spring.
Bien. Agradezco a la gente que ha estado involucrada en el Greenway, y es algo positivo para el centro de Waterbury. Y como dije, nunca he visto los planes, no sé si los planes van a ir todo el camino hasta la Avenida Thompson, hasta Waterville, donde vivo, o todo el camino hacia el sur, creo que comienza allí. Pero, ya saben, nuevamente, tenemos que ver el dinero que gastamos, y no quiero sonar como un tipo que, ya saben, es barato o algo así, porque no soy, realmente sé que tenemos que hacer muchas cosas buenas para los ciudadanos de Waterbury y darles su dinero por el que les cuesta. Y trabajemos todos juntos en eso. Gracias.
El siguiente orador de la calle 112, Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. Le pido que vote en apoyo a esta primera fase en el Greenway. Solo un par de cosas sobre esto. Ya saben, mucha gente trabaja muy duro desde el lado de la ciudad, desde el lado del público, desde el lado del Consejo, innumerables consejos. Ya saben, hablamos mucho de dinero. Sí, casi 10 millones de dólares es mucho dinero, pero cuando miras lo que obtuvimos, que mucha gente no pensó que obtuvimos porque fue la primera vez que esta ciudad trató de obtener un don de Tiger, y lo logramos, esto es nada comparado con lo que obtuvimos del gobierno federal. Y necesitamos mantener este proyecto en marcha. Y, ya saben, disagreeo muchas veces con lo que la gente dice, y, ya saben, es derecho de todos, pero escuchar a algunas personas que salen aquí y dicen que no hay cuenta, ¿dónde está la cuenta? No se nos dice sobre las cosas. Y luego me sorprendió escuchar algunos innuendos que McDermott y la ciudad están condenando por este Greenway. Es asombroso. McDermott no recibe nada de este Greenway. Lo que hemos obtenido como ciudad de McDermott y otros negocios que francamente podrían habernos dejado en la lucha es nada más que el extremo apoyo y respeto de nuestros negocios. Y venir aquí y, ya saben, el señor Mantiro, una persona muy conocida en el centro de Waterbury, decidió mover su negocio de aquí a la ciudad de Waterbury cuando todo el otro le dijo que estaba loco. Y, ya saben, este tipo apoya todo y cualquier cosa en el centro de Waterbury, y venir aquí y hacer que suene como si estuvieran pagando de vuelta por lo que están haciendo por el centro de Waterbury es desagradable. Y no voy a tolerar estos innuendos más. Solo puedo tomar tanto de la gente cuando llegan aquí y dan mala información. Y, ya saben, la persona que dijo eso hace dos reuniones fue totalmente por el Greenway. Pero, ya saben, ahora somos un año electoral, las opiniones de la gente cambian, y, ya saben, es lo que es. No voy a estar por eso más. Waterbury está cambiando por el bien. No voy a dejar que la gente trate de traernos de vuelta a donde estábamos y donde no íbamos para ir. Así que pido su apoyo.
Señor presidente, ese es el último orador.
Gracias. Con eso, cerraremos esa audiencia pública y abriremos la audiencia para diversos mejorones de carreteras, paseo y repavado de calles en la cantidad de 2 millones de dólares. Nuevamente, por favor, inscribanse con el sheriff de la ciudad si quieren abordar el Consejo en ese tema y indiquen su nombre y dirección para el registro. ¿Señor sheriff?
Primer orador de esta noche de la calle 112, Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Solo pediría que el Consejo aprobara estos mejorones de carretera. Ya saben, estamos llegando a ese momento en que es crucial y los campos de asfalto van a cerrar. Mucha gente ha estado reclamando sobre las carreteras. Ya saben, hemos hecho muy bien en esto en el pasado, hemos tratado de, ya saben, sé que el alcalde ha pedido, normalmente se ha decidido por los trabajos públicos sobre qué carreteras se paven, pero en los últimos años se ha tomado por sí mismo, le ha preguntado al público dónde les gustaría que las carreteras se pavé, ¿cuáles son las partes peores? Y les doy mucho crédito por eso. Ya saben, la gente va a decir que 2 millones de dólares es mucho dinero. Ya saben, podríamos estar aquí toda la noche diciendo que todo es mucho dinero, pero si no continuamos en invertir en nuestra infraestructura, entonces vamos a ver carreteras peores que lo que vemos ahora, el año que viene, y el año anterior. Así que le pido que acepte esto.
El siguiente orador de la calle 438, Austin Road, Joe Lucian.
Joe Lucian, 438, Austin Road, apartamento 3. Estoy de acuerdo con Pelletier en cierta medida, que estas carreteras necesitan ser reparadas. Mi pregunta es, ¿por qué ahora, en este momento? Ahora, escucho que es el tema 8, para ser claros, en caso de que alguien esté preguntando de qué estoy hablando. El problema aquí es que la gente continúa sufriendo en términos de lo que está pasando alrededor de ellos, en la construcción, en el aumento de los impuestos, y por el hecho de que ni siquiera tenemos presupuesto. Nadie sabe qué están pagando en los impuestos de automóvil. Y esto que viene del estado, ¿cómo va a pasar? Mi propuesta es que hagamos que los contratistas de I-84 paguen por esto. Estamos lidiando con demasiado aquí en Waterbury que no mucha gente ve, y es algo que debemos considerar, porque absolutamente deberíamos, a pesar de que se están llevando las elecciones, deberíamos mirar las carreteras. ¿Cómo van a llegar estas personas de punto A a punto B si no pueden hacerlo seguros? ¿Y por qué los contribuyentes de Waterbury tienen que sufrir porque estas carreteras están en daño? El ejemplo perfecto es la carretera de Pearl Lake. Justamente gastamos más de 5 millones en eso. Vamos a tener que hablar en el futuro cómo vamos a reparar esa carretera de nuevo. Pero depende de ustedes. Y solo espero, para aquellos que acepten esto, que tengan una bolsa grande, porque cuando llegue el momento y nuestros impuestos aumenten y la gente diga que suficiente es suficiente y se van, quiero que ustedes puedan financiar lo que costaría para sus impuestos de propiedad y los ingresos que habrían generado al vivir aquí. Gracias.
El siguiente orador de la calle 96, Downstreet, Martin Spring.
No, creo que debería ser pagado por esto.
Creo que deberíamos ser pagados por esto.
Sí, correcto. Es correcto. Hemos estado haciendo esto por mucho tiempo, señor presidente, mucho tiempo. Varios mejorones de carretera, paseo y repavado, y la calle en la cantidad de 2 millones de dólares. Nuevamente, no voy a rechazar los 2 millones de dólares como algunas personas vienen aquí y no quiero discutir sobre esto. Pero la cuestión fundamental es que ustedes van a pavar las carreteras, y no veo ninguna lista en frente de mí en esta agenda, dónde van a ser pagados las carreteras, qué calles, dónde van a ir, los bordes, los derrames y lo que sea. Anyo apoyaría esto, y yo apoyo esto, pero solo quiero cuidar de la forma en que gastamos nuestro dinero y asegurarnos de que, ya saben, cuando estamos paviando carreteras, que no lo estamos haciendo por razones políticas, ¿vale? Lo estamos haciendo porque tenemos que hacerlo. Y entiendo, tenemos primavera, verano, verano, otoño. Entiendo cómo llegan las carreteras, ya saben, y siendo un mecánico certificado, veo que muchas autos vienen, que tienen que ser reparados, tienen que ser reparados porque el subestacionismo está arruinado y todo, desde que impacta en los agujeros. Y estoy muy agradecido por la gente que viene y nos ayuda, especialmente en Waterville. Pero solo quiero asegurarme cuando, ya saben, gastamos nuestro dinero, que aseguramos de que está hecho por las razones correctas. Y estoy seguro de que lo son, y agradezco a todos ustedes, señoras y señores, por hacer esto. Pero la cuestión fundamental es que la gente en el centro de Waterbury, ya saben, reclama mucho sobre sus agujeros. Estoy seguro de que todos ustedes, los aldeanos y todas las mujeres, probablemente han recibido bastante llamadas de mucha gente que se refiere a agujeros y cosas no correctas dentro de, ya saben, las estructuras de carreteras, infraestructura, infraestructura, lo que sea. La cuestión fundamental es que la gente necesita algo hecho en el centro de Waterbury. Sabemos que es muy caro, sabemos que I-84 se está redonando y todo se está arreglando y rectificando. Eso había sido hecho hace mucho tiempo. Pero nuevamente, realmente desearía, ya saben, con todo el respeto a los aldeanos y todas las mujeres, que nos mostraran a nosotros mismos como líderes de comunidad dentro de nuestros grupos, especialmente el Club de la Comunidad de Waterville, las carreteras que se van a ser especialmente pavadas y arregladas, y especialmente las personas en las vías亡as. Sé que tuve algo hecho en mi cuello de la selva, en mi travesía, y quiero decirle a la gente que lo aprecio. Y quiero dejar que el presidente sepa, lo aprecio con todo mi corazón, he estado esperando mucho tiempo para que eso suceda. Y sé que tuvimos nuestras carreteras pavadas hace mucho tiempo, Fort Hill Downstreet, pero no tenemos los derrames, ¿vale? Y esta es la razón por la cual los travesías de la gente se despojan. Pero ese es otro problema para otro momento. Pero la cosa es que tenemos que entender que, colectivamente, como la gente aquí en esta ciudad, que las cosas tienen que ser arregladas, las cosas tienen que ser hecho, y tienen que ser hecho inmediatamente. Y desafortunadamente, no tenemos el lujo como lo hacen al sur, donde, ya saben, tienen clima caliente, ya saben, probablemente solo tienen un par de meses de mal clima, ni siquiera... Pero tenemos que lidiar con el neblina, el hielo y todo lo demás, como dije, el cambio de temporada. Así que esto es algo que apoyo, y creo que es una buena cosa hacer el paseo y pavado. Pero nuevamente, ya saben, cuando lo están haciendo, solo, ya saben, déjanos saber si pueden antes de que... Y tal vez esté fuera de línea para decir esto, y no quiero serlo, pero solo me gustaría saber qué carreteras van a ser pagadas, y nadie dice. Tal vez deberías poner una lista en el periódico, y si hubiera una lista en el periódico, voy a dejar a todos ustedes en el Consejo de los Aldermen saber, todos lo hicieron, y en la audiencia, lo disculpo, porque no puedo leer el periódico todo el tiempo, y no vi nada en el periódico que se refiere a qué carreteras van a ser pagadas. Pero nuevamente, ya saben, como algunas personas vienen aquí y piensan que soy anti-gobierno o antiesto, antieso. No lo soy. Soy orgulloso de ser americano. Soy orgulloso de que mi familia sirvió a mi país como muchos de nosotros lo hacen.
Un minuto, señor Spring.
Sé, sé. De todos modos, hagamos lo que podemos para asegurarnos de que las cosas se arreglen y se despejen y se rectifiquen para todos los residentes del centro de Waterbury. Y estoy contento de que ustedes estén haciendo esto, porque realmente necesitamos que Waterbury brille. Gracias.
Ese es el último orador, señor presidente.
Gracias. Cerraremos esa audiencia pública y abriremos la audiencia con respecto al reemplazo parcial de la pared para la escuela de elementaryo de Sprague en la cantidad de 280.000 dólares. Si quieren abordar el Consejo en ese tema, por favor, inscribanse con el sheriff de la ciudad. Indiquen su nombre y dirección para el registro.
Primer orador de esta noche de la calle 112, Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. Pediría apoyo para este reemplazo parcial de pared. Primero quiero agradecer al señor Branker y su personal, el departamento de carpintería y el oficio del inspector de escuela por hacer lo que han podido hacer para ahorrar el dinero de la ciudad en este apoyo. Puedo decirles, trabajando en ese edificio, la pared necesita ser reemplazada. Han hecho varios reparaciones a lo largo de los años. Esto ha estado en marcha durante las administraciones anteriores, puedo decirles eso. Y este es solo otro ejemplo de por qué pasa cuando no invayamos en nuestra infraestructura. Así que voy a pedir, antes de que el clima empecé a afectarnos, como vemos en el sur con los huracanes, estoy rezando y esperando que eso no significa que estemos en una despertación rude de verano, pero sin embargo, la pared necesita ser reparada, y le pediría que acepte eso. Gracias.
El siguiente orador de la calle 96, Downstreet, Martin Spring.
Debo de estar aquí y esperar mi turno, ¿verdad? Bien. En cuanto al reemplazo parcial de pared de la escuela de elementaryo de Sprague, ya saben, mucha gente no lo sabe, pero yo fui a la escuela de Sprague, gradué allí, y eso fue hace mucho tiempo, pero estoy de acuerdo con el señor Pelletier, deberíamos arreglar la pared y hacer que las cosas se limpien allí, porque yo viajo allí todos los días, considerando que vivo en Waterville, por la calle, por el vehículo de motor, y veo a los niños jugando en el patio todo el tiempo, y puedo ver que la pared tiene que ser arreglada. Sé que muchas edificios tienen que ser arreglados. Quiero decir, ya saben, si miro la escuela de Sprague, no sé cuánto tiempo hace, probablemente esa edificación es más de 100 años. Tiene que ser. Sé que aún no estoy más de 100, pero la gente dice que soy 160, pero aún no estoy allí. De todos modos, creo que es algo que debe hacerse y hacerse de inmediato. Pero nuevamente, ya saben, 280.000 dólares, no sé cómo funciona el proceso, ustedes van a apoyar, lo que sea, pero la cuestión fundamental, tal vez podamos ver si podemos hacer un pequeño recorte aquí y tratar de ahorrar un poco de dinero para los contribuyentes. Eso es lo que realmente me preocupa. No estoy en contra de hacer nada. Creo, entiendo, el gobierno tiene que correr en nivel local, estatal y federal, pero ¿a qué precio? Nuevamente, 280.000 dólares es bastante, parece ser, para una pared, porque sé dónde estamos en la asociación de condominios, solo tuvimos algunos reparaciones de paredes. are in the condo association, we just had some roof repairs and it probably ran about $10,000, and that's a really good buy. So, I mean, I, I just wondered if we could look at other, you know, alternatives, if you will, where we could try to save the taxpayers' money. Again, you know, uh, I, I like, uh, you know, what you guys are doing, I appreciate what you guys are doing, and, uh, you know, I could just say, let's move forward and get things done, because it's not, it's not just this school, it's all the schools throughout the city of Waterbury to need, obviously, to be fixed. So, we gotta just, you know, if we don't spend a lot of money here, $280,000, why can't we just piggyback that onto another account and save that money and utilize that money for other schools and maybe need windows or something else? And do what we can, in other words, just have that money in place and just have it in some type of a pot and leave it there and utilize that money, and I don't know what the rules and regs are with these bondings and everything, federal, state, loco, if we have to spend the money, and if it says you gotta spend $280,000, don't spend $280,000, spend maybe $200,000, and, and try to save that $80,000 for other repairs for, uh, you know, schools or whatnot within the city of Waterbury, and maybe some of the buildings around here, okay? Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. We'll close that public hearing and open the public hearing with respect to the East Liberty Bridge replacement in the amount of $3,500,000. Again, if you want to address that particular item, please sign up with the City Sheriff, state your name and address for the record. Mr. Sheriff.
First speaker tonight from 96 Downstreet, Martin Spring.
Well, you know what, I'm gonna promise, this is the last time I'm speaking, since this is the last public hearing, but I'll be back. Okay, installation on elevators in Washington and Bunker Hill Elementary Schools?
No, we're doing East Liberty Bridge replacement.
Okay, then it's not the last one, all right. East Liberty Bridge replacement, amount of $3,500,000. I understand that, you know, people who live out in East End, they need to get this done. I know people talked to me before the meeting, they said the bridge is in dire need of repairs, so I'm gonna be really brief. Again, if the money's not utilized for all the repairs, then maybe we can roll the money over to something else, that people are gonna be able to utilize that money for some other city projects, no matter where they be, the west end, the east end, the south end, or anywhere in the city of Waterbury. And so, all I can say, since probably I'm the only speaker on this, is that just be aware of the money we're spending, and I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here, but the bottom line is, people gotta understand that, again, I don't wanna repeat myself like a broken record, and if I do, I apologize. People gotta understand that things gotta be done around the city of Waterbury, and things cost money unfortunately, because construction costs are way up. And so, and, and we know the state is broken, federal government is, you know, is, uh, in horrible shape right now as far as deficits go, but the, the bottom line is, you know, long as we're not gonna turn around and raise the taxes for the people, the mill rates are not gonna go up, then I'm perfectly okay with this project. But again, try not to spend all the money, if you can, and roll it over to another project, or just keep the money somewheres in, in a safe, you know, safe deposit box, whatever you wanna call it, and, uh, you know, utilize that money when you need it, because I know the state is, uh, trying to do something, keep money aside, when they're not gonna utilize any of the money they're gonna turn around, and they're gonna make things happen for people if they can. So, again, all I can say is, it's $3,500,000, let's see what we can do, and if the money is gonna be, like I said, if it's gonna cost a lot more than this, than $3,500,000, I just hope you guys let us know, and I just hope you don't go over this timeline of $3,500,000. Thank you.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I'm asking for your support on this East Liberty Street Bridge. Uh, I've been over there quite a few times. That bridge, um, just by looking at it, looks like it's been put off for years and years. You know, I understand everybody being worried about money and, and everything. People don't just put these things on the agenda just to put them on the agenda. We have people with qualified engineering degrees telling you, I think there's gonna be a problem here in the next couple of years if we don't do something now. We can't, especially with a bridge, we cannot wait till the day when, God forbid, somebody's on it and the bridge gives way. You know, yes, almost $4 million is a lot, but I think it's nothing in the bucket compared to what the state has paid for to redo bridges and everything else on the highway. I think we're getting a better deal, uh, for this replacement bridge. So, you know, and the whole talk tonight about, you know, we need to be very cautious about bonding, let me remind everybody that, you know, because of years and years of having the Oversight Board and having this administration continue to watch our finances, continue to keep our bond rating at great status, we are able to get these bonds cheap. Go ask Hartford, go ask New Haven, go ask Bridgeport, go ask Meriden, ask them how many capital improvement projects they're doing, and how many bonds they were able to get this year. I could guarantee you, if they're lucky, maybe one, because Bridgeport's in junk bond status. Hartford, as much as I love that mayor and what he's trying to do, they're on the verge of bankruptcy, and I admire him for what he's doing up there, and, you know, luckily, we are not in that crisis. So, I would ask this board to pay for this, or to get this bond authorization going, let's get it repaired while we still can, and while we are still in financially great opportunities. Thank you.
That's the last speaker, Mr. President.
Thank you. With that, we'll close that public hearing and open the public hearing with respect to the installation of elevators at Washington and Bunker Hill Elementary Schools in the amount of $1,185,000. Mr. Sheriff.
First, uh, next speaker is from 96 Downstreet, Martin Spring.
I thought you promised.
Yes, I am, this is the last one, Mr. President, okay? Um, installation of elevators, Washington and Bunker Hill Elementary School, amount of $1,185,000. Um, you know, I know we need the elevators, I know we need a lot of work done, again, you know, this is something that's gotta be done, it should be done, and has to be done, and especially up in Bunker Hill Elementary Schools, that's up in your district, I believe, Mr. President, Mr. Napoli, that's up in your district, and Steve J. Comey, I know that's up in your district, that's 72nd Ward, I mean, I'm sorry, 73rd. Anyways, it's something that's gotta be done and should be done, and I know, uh, people are looking forward to it, because when I see people around, they tell me things have to be fixed up in the city, and, uh, we gotta move forward, and I understand that, but I'm not knocking the intelligence of any, uh, people who have a lot of education, engineers, and people come up and just make all these designs and plans and everything else. I just want people to know that, uh, you know, but I am a citizen of the city of Waterbury, and I'm entitled to my opinion, and, uh, nobody's gonna take that away from me. If they don't like it, it's too bad, you know, what can I say? I'm entitled to my opinion. I always said, the last time I looked, there's still an American flag flying on that pole, and I had my First Amendment right. The bottom line, I don't want nobody ever taking that away from me. And, and again, if you wanna talk to me later about this and whatever, we can debate it, but the bottom line is, I understand things gotta be done and they should be done, and I do appreciate all the hard effort work that you people do on the Board of Aldermen, you know, and, uh, the ladies and the gentlemen, and people in the audience, and even the people that work for the city of Waterbury. But the thing is, like I said before, if the money's not gonna be utilized, all this money, just put the money aside, that's all I'm saying, put the money aside for a rainy day. I know we all do that at home, and if you guys could look at this and scrutinize it, a little bit of emphasis, and say, hey, look, you know what, we, maybe Martin Spring is right, we don't really need all this money right now, okay? In any aspect within the city of Waterbury, any budgetary matters, okay? So, maybe we should put the money in a lockbox or something, or do something to make sure the money stays put, and I, you know, again, once the money is there, then we could utilize it in the future. My, my, my whole thing with this, and it's not a gripe, I just don't wanna see my taxes go up. That's the only thing, I mean, I understand, we gotta get things done, everybody agrees with me on that. That's a great thing, but the, the bottom line is, how much can we afford? And we gotta be very, very friskly conservative if we can, fiscally conservative if we can, and, and utilize the money in the right direction. I'm not saying we don't need this, I understand the elevators, God forbid we have anybody getting stuck in an elevator, we're never, we're never gonna hear the end of it, but the bottom line is, we gotta do what we have to do, we all know that, and this is something that we should look at and, and pay attention to. Again, I'm, I'm very appreciative to have this meeting, the public hearings, I know I've probably been a little pest coming up here five, six times, but I've been at the Board, coming to the Board of Aldermen meetings for at least 20 years now, and I come because I love coming to the city of Waterbury Board of Aldermen meetings. I live in this city, I pay my taxes like everybody else, and I think you people are wonderful people, Republicans, Democrats, it seems some independents were here before, but the bottom line is, let's all work together as people that care about our community and wanna do something positive within our community. I know you all have it in your hearts and souls, you wanna do that, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the people coming up here and speaking before me on all these topics. And all I can say is, this is a, a good thing that we're gonna be doing, and let's just pay attention to how we spend our money. That's all I wanna let you know. Thank you, Mr. President, and I promise this is the last time, but I'll be back again. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. President, from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier. I'm in favor of the installation of the elevators. Um, I know that we are in the process of, uh, already installing them at other schools, not only does this help us become handicap compliant in all of our schools, but, um, on a personal note for myself, it also helps, um, you know, as everybody knows, I'm a maintainer in the school system, you know, I'm 34 years old, um, you know, getting up there, um, especially during Christmas time with all the parties and everything. Some of these buildings, as you know very well, Alderman Giacetti at your former school, Tinker School, I believe it's three flights, you know, all stairs, it's not easy carrying garbage all the way down, so it comes in handy for us, and not only for the kids and the staff that need it, and I think it's a no-brainer, and, um, you know, I'm gonna be working for the city, I would think, for another 40 or 50 years, so I think that it would be great to get all these elevators in now before I get to that age, so, thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. With that, we'll close, um, that public hearing and call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, September 11, 2017. If everyone could just rise, I'd ask for a moment of silence today, it's the 16th anniversary of the attack on the Trade Centers, and I'd just ask for a moment of silence for all of the victims of that attack. Thank you. And with that, we'll, um, we'll do the pledge and the prayer, and I would just ask this evening that we keep in our prayers and our thoughts the folks in Houston, and Florida, Georgia, and South Carolina who've been pummeled over this past week by, by, um, the, uh, very, very strong hurricanes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Brunelli.
Here.
Alderman Giacetti.
Here.
Alderwoman Cato.
Here.
Alderwoman Cummings is here, okay. Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Giacomi.
Here.
Alderman Guerra.
Here.
Alderman Hadley.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Napoli.
Here.
Alderman Padula.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Prenaruski.
Here.
We have 13 present, uh, one absent?
14.
14 present, one absent, I'm sorry.
And just for the record, um, Alderman Kula did not come this evening, he wasn't feeling well, but he did have a big weekend, he was married on Saturday evening, so the next time you see him, make sure you say congratulations to him, so, I think we can excuse him for this evening. With that, our first, um, item is an official presentation, uh, by Sal Porzio, the project manager, in conjunction with, um, NV5 Connecticut LLC regarding Phase 1 of the Waterbury Greenway Project. Sal?
Uh, thank you. Sal Porzio, project manager, Department of Public Works, project manager for the Greenway Phase 1. Today we'll have a presentation by Steve Normandin of NV5, uh, they were formerly the RBA firm, and after Steve is done, we will take questions. Steve Normandin.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm just gonna give you a brief presentation of the project itself. Some of you may have seen this before, so it could be a refresher, others, it's new, but I'll, I'll do briefly a once-over on all the project specifics. As you all know, this is, no, I can't say this. Um, the, the Greenway is, is a planned route all along the Route, Route 8 corridor and the Nogatuck River, 44 miles between various municipalities, uh, and several of which have already taken the implementation phase, um, which have stemmed from, from the long planning that's been going on. And now, the city of Waterbury's portion, there's about a seven-mile stretch that's planned within the city of Waterbury's limits, and Phase 1, the project here, uh, tonight, is the first step towards construction implementation, uh, of, of the Greenway within city of Waterbury. So, the project starts, uh, at the southerly most part of the city, at the, uh, Nogatuck Bill, uh, town line, uh, by the kayak launch recreational area in the south, and then heads up 2.2 miles along Plats Mill Road, and then onto South Main Street towards Eagle Street. And just looking, hard to see from these, but in basically, starting at the southerly end, in yellow is, is the roadway, Plats Mill Road, and at that part of the roadway is, is very narrow, very constrained, uh, portion, uh, the goal of the project is to provide a shared use path, a bicycle and pedestrian route for the 2.2 miles, so starting on the southerly end, the roadway is, is very narrow, and, um, the only, um, way to get a pedestrian or bicycle facility in there is to provide a shared roadway, which is simply taking the travel lanes that are there now and striping and signing with bicycle, uh, signage, a shared roadway. And that's basically an 800-foot segment, very, very minor, but, uh, too many constraints, environmental factors, and, uh, and, uh, limited right-of-way in that area. So, as we head north, tough to see once again, but on the left-hand side of the picture is Bristol Street, and, and this would head up north towards South Main Street to the right side of the picture, and from that, from that shared roadway, we actually can, in this particular segment, about, uh, 1,200-foot segment at least, uh, from that section, from Bristol Street to South Main Street, we are going to shift the existing two-lane roadway to one side and gain space along the riverside, uh, and in those images on the, in the bottom is a sample of a recent successful, successful project that we've had, and we did very, very similar, um, in that, we've taken the existing pavement and just reallocated it to one side, striped a, a buffer, a flush buffer in between the travelway and the bi-directional shared use path, and the shared use path is both bicycle and pedestrian, similar to a roadway, the bikes, uh, and the pedestrians heading southbound, when they'll be in the right lane heading southbound, and the same would be opposing, uh, the travelway in the, in the northbound direction. So, there's a couple of images on the bottom, how that would look, the river would be, uh, you know, in the first two pictures, on the right-hand side, and being that it's a low-volume roadway, uh, and a low-speed roadway, uh, this can be easily achieved and provide the, the connection that is a desire. Heading up, what this is showing now is the corner of Plats Mill Road and South Main Street, um, that, that same, the same images would be brought up to, to that intersection, and at that particular point, we are, uh, lucky to have the centerpiece of the project, a seven-acre, uh, park, um, being donated to, to the city, and the city would take over that, that seven-acre parcel, and the, the And the shared-use path would be off-road at this point and would really meander through the center of the park, in yellow. The park itself would be a passive park, keep it in its natural state, and just provide public access to enjoy the fruits of what the nature has down there, and birding, and kayaking, and the waterfront. So the park itself, I could talk about that separately, but basically, the elements in that park would be benches, you know, reading areas, a kayak launch I mentioned, a pavilion and a trailhead, and with that, a paved parking lot for about 25 cars. And it really would be, you know, act as the city's trailhead from the south. From that point, the shared-use path would run through that park, and then would jump adjacent to South Main Street on the riverside. And what we're doing there is taking the roadway, and it has two lanes northbound and two lanes southbound, we would be eliminating two of the lanes, so at least one lane in each direction, so that we can gain the space for a vegetated buffer and a 10-foot-wide shared-use path along the river. So, here's the park in detail, plenty of images of what the elements would be, backing up a sense there, all the elements that I had mentioned. Tough to see here, but this is the segment. Going north from the park would be on the west side of South Main Street, and would be built within the Condat's right-of-way. They own and maintain South Main Street. And this would be taking a portion of the roadway, which is over capacity from a traffic standpoint, meaning that we've done traffic studies and the volumes, once Route Eight was put in many, many years ago, is, South Main Street now is underutilized from a traffic standpoint. So the benefit of that is providing this nice pedestrian and aesthetic and recreational and transportation feature. So what this is showing now is, on the top, the shared-use path goes along South Main Street. It takes a left turn towards the river, over a creek, using a pedestrian bridge, and then works its way behind five commercial establishments on that side of South Main Street. We had a choice to either go in front of the commercial properties or behind. We've given the city several alternatives showing that, and in the end, just the amount of friction between the vehicles and the cars and the limited parking that the commercial establishments have, the safer and more aesthetically pleasing alternative was to go behind the buildings. And that would head, we'd come back and then come back on to South Main Street and head up along the left side of South Main Street up to Eagle Street, where it would temporarily terminate, awaiting Phases Two and Three of the Greenway. So, the South Main Street portion that I mentioned, on the right-hand side is South Main Street now showing two lanes. What you see is the shared-use path, which is basically taking up the two travel lanes that are currently there. The river would be on the left, and it would be protected by a guiderail on the one side, a landscaped buffer area, so that the pedestrians can be a safe distance away from the roadway. And then, on the left-hand side, we're showing a handrail. This would be intermittent, and styles to be determined, of course, in final design. Basically, anywhere that there's a steep drop-off, we would have safety railing for the bikes and the pedestrians. Okay, now, the part we're showing here, a little close-up, is behind the commercial establishments. Hard to see, but there's the car wash, there's the muffler shop, and there's the hotel and Brazilian grill. Those are the parcels in there. And just that there's so much activity along South Main Street and along those frontages, just didn't make sense to introduce bikes and pedestrians into the mix of those vehicles, you know, in and out of those shops. So what that would look like, you know, there's an existing condition to the left, that basically the shared-use path would be at the top of the slope, so to speak, and almost like an esplanade, where, you know, walkers, joggers can actually look out and really get a closer view to the river, more so than the pieces on South Main Street. We've spoken with the owners in length, and on the right-hand side of the picture, you'll see an eight-foot fence, which would have access gates for the property owners, but this would be run through a permanent easement from those property owners, seven parcels. And just a little cross-sectional view behind those buildings, it's a steep drop-off, so there is, we have to level out that, the back of the buildings. What we're showing is a retaining wall system behind the stores to kind of terrace out the area for the shared-use path. And on the right-hand side would be the fencing protecting from the property owners, and then on the left-hand side would be a handrail overlooking the river. The schedule of the project, it was mentioned that, you know, we started this project in the design phase back in, you know, 2013 or so. In 2014, we achieved design approval from Condot verbally, however, there had needed to be some work regarding the archaeological findings. As part of the due diligence for this project, in environmental phase of the project, there was a screening to determine if there were any impacts, and upon our findings, the history of the seven-acre park site in particular, we had to go to a second level and now a third level in terms of determining the artifacts that were found at the park site. So during that process, a memorandum of understanding needed to be drafted up. In that same time, just to touch on the fact of, at the same time, the Condot had approached us regarding their concern for the retaining wall. So during those two years, there was discussions and a stoppage from Condot, number one, to address the archaeological findings and do the more intense due diligence, as well as for Condot internally to determine what the route is to repair or replace their failing retaining wall on South Main Street. This is a short section which Condot is looking into. So, just in 2017, we're given the go-ahead and approval for final design. So that's where we are today, coming back to the project finally to hammer out the final design and permitting stages. So, if, you know, preliminary design was completed in 2014, there was the two-year gap, we're back on it now. And archaeological recovery, we're going to take some portions of the park itself, do some archaeological digging, and incorporate that into the final design of the park to celebrate the findings there and to have interpretive signage and memorialize the fact that there was some sensitive areas within the park. And that's all in the memorandum of understanding with DEEP and Condot. And so that's, that will happen in the spring of 2018. Our final design will continue through that part and will be completed in fall 2018. Permitting will continue through that and usually lags. That'll be completed in spring 2019 before construction. The right-of-way, as I mentioned, easements are required for seven parcels, five businesses. That will be starting and be ongoing and to be completed when we complete the final design in fall of 2018. And then advertising forbidding would be early 2019 for a spring 2019 start. Construction looking to last 18, up to 24 months. And that is it.
I'd just like to add a few comments before questioning. I was just actually giving today a handout prepared by COG. They did an economic study for impacts, and specifically for the proposed impacts for the entire Nogatuck Greenway and what would happen in Waterbury. I'm not going to go through the litany, but Greenways themselves are economic generators, increase property values, decrease crime. The more people are out there, more eyes, less opportunity for crime. Yes, obviously, there are security concerns. The plans for the Greenway are on the city's website, and they have been since 2014 at least. And when the next stage of the design is finished, we will put those on. Again, we will update the plans, but they are there under the city's website. On the top of the tab, it says actually Tiger. If you go to the Tiger, it will lead you to the Greenway, plans, presentations, documentation. The city, as you know, recently received additional federal funding, repurposed funding via the COG, for other cities had projects that they didn't complete. This will allow us to build the project as originally envisioned, with the separate shared-use bike path all the way from Eagle Street to the Nogatuck border. The project worked a little bit backwards, where people said, "We are going to build X, and, but you only have this much money." Usually, you say, "I have this much money, how can I, how much can I build?" And with the passage of time, the prices, inflation, price escalation, we, there was a shortage of money. With the repurposed funds, we can now build the project as it was originally envisioned in the feasibility study by ALTA. The city received numerous grants and awards, as you know. The term grant is sort of a misnomer, because none of the money that I'm aware of is an outright grant. There's no checking account, there's no deposit. It's all dedicated funds, legislatively designated, but it's, basically, they're all reimbursement programs. Some are reimbursable at 100%, some are at 80%. The 80% ones require a 20% city contribution towards the, getting you to the 100% figure. So, people say, "There's grants, where's the money?" The money isn't sitting in our accounts. It's being administered by the state, it's primarily federal funds. Question was asked about what the city's cost will be with the repurposed funds, the federal 80-20 funds, and the outright funds, which are 100%, is approximately $5.8 million. The city's required local match is about approximately $1.5 million. That's in addition to the 5.8. The city will be using $500,000 that it received from the state of Connecticut to reduce its 20% match. So our match effect will be approximately $1 million. Out of the funding, and basically, that is what the city's contribution will be to the project. The balance of the project costs are to be reimbursed through existing and dedicated federal and state funds. So the city's looking at the approximately the $1 million, which it must contribute as part of its match to get the balancing 80% for certain funding. So, that is a short explanation of the funding sources and what the city would be obligated for. There was a discussion about, mentioned also about the wall. It's a retaining wall south of the car wash. If the wall, the city was pushing Condot to have them redo the wall sooner rather than later. If the wall collapses and it's after our Greenway is built, it would be 100% state liability. There'd be no liability on the city. There will be some maintenance requirements, because a portion of the Greenway is in the city right of way. And Steve can discuss that, they've done it at similar projects. We would have to have an agreement with the state as to certain maintenance items that we would have to take care of for them, in order for us to be allowed to build in the right-of-way. Steve can address that further.
Typically, on shared-use path projects, they're, it's the local municipality placing a path or installing a path in the state right-of-way, and it's been done many times over. And what normally happens is, the state will allow the initial construction, and the municipality would take a certain maintenance agreement with the city, with, excuse me, with Condot. Condot obviously owns the entire right-of-way. The city is going to have this 10-foot-wide path and adjacent landscape area and adjacent railing. So typically, the city would be, would get into a maintenance of understanding or maintenance jurisdiction agreement with Condot, and it would say that the city would be responsible for the maintenance of the path itself. That would be any striping, any resurfacing, any cracked ceiling that happens over the years, any maintenance on the actual asphalt itself. Probably in this particular case, the city would be responsible for maintaining the landscaping adjacent to it, which is minimal, and the actual pedestrian railing, which would be intermittent throughout, the city would be responsible for that. That is not the highway, you know, part of the highway corridor. And anytime a tree falls on the railing or it gets damaged, the city would be responsible for that. So it would really be minimal in that terms. There's a guiderail proposed between our path and the travelway. The guiderail is, would be the responsibility of Condot.
And I actually mentioned this economic revitalization study by COG. I don't want to steal their thunder, so I'm not sure if they're going to come present it, but if they're not, I will make sure that it gets distributed to the Board of Alderman and also gets put on the city's website. So, if you have any questions for myself or Steve?
Can I, yeah, I have one, Sal, just on the funding. The nine, we're agreeing this evening, if we do this, to bond 9.0, or potentially to bond $9.5 million. Is that all just to get us into the numbers that are reimbursable and that ultimately it'll be just $1 million of the city's money, so that 9.5 encompasses what you were discussing earlier?
Yes. It's a little bit confusing, because it's, there's a number of funding sources, but the, I call them the 80-20, that have the mandatory 20% match, yes, to, one, because it's a reimbursement program, like I said, so we must pay the 100% upfront. We have to bond for the entire project, and then we will submit, as we are invoiced, as we get billed, we will, and pay, we will turn around and invoice the state. So yes, I'm sure I'm not answering your question directly, but to get the, all the federal funds, specifically the 80-20 funds, we have to contribute the million, but that would be our ultimate...
So this is similar to what we do when we build the school, where we agree to bond the full school amount, even though we're only paying 20% of the ultimate cost, and the state is going to pay the other 80%?
Correct.
We're into it for a million, but we've got to bond 9.5, or agree to bond 9.5, because that's the total cost of the project. The rest of it will be money that comes from some other pots along the way?
Yes, there's a number of sources.
Okay. With respect to the easements that we would have to take, how do you envision those being acquired? Is that something we would do, the state would do?
The city, as its regular practice, DPW's practices, to basically hire Condot. Condot does the negotiations, the valuations, and any acquisitions. Chase Avenue, for the Tiger project, it's the same procedure, but that's been our standard procedure for this.
Okay. So they would do it through their Right of Way folks who do this?
Their Right of Way Division, yes.
All right.
And at the end of the project, we would get whatever title, fee, interest transferred to the city.
Okay. With respect to the, and I know that we're looking at going out, according to this, starting construction in the late spring of 2019, going out potentially a year and a half to two years, but to get the 2.2 miles done of this Phase One, where does the park fall into that? Would that, would the park open at the end of that, the whole thing open at one time, or would the park open potentially earlier and then continue on with the Greenway?
Yes, the project is, the funds are all co-mingled. The project, the park, and the shared-use path, the Greenway, are basically one project according to Condot, and that's how they've been administering the project. We've asked about doing the park first, and they have said, "No, it's all one project." So, it will all be done at the same time, and we're estimating 18 to 24 months, closer to 18 months for completion.
Now, the only reason I ask is, you know, Mimi Niedemeyer has donated the property for the park, and it's been a while. I understand the process here, so I was just curious as to whether we can do it. I also understand that DOT has its way of doing things, and it would take an act of God to change their process. So, with that, are there any other questions? Alderman Giacomi?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sal, thanks for coming, as always. This was good. You know, it's been sort of an ongoing thing, and I think some of this may probably, possibly have been covered in the past, but it's always good to sort of give us updates and reminders. Just kind of quickly, a thought I had, as both you and I believe Steve were talking, when it comes to the... when it comes to the landscaping, which I think you said there wasn't much, it was minimal, but that would be ultimately the city responsibility, as well as this park. Is this something, and perhaps I'm getting ahead of myself, but is this something where we would envision perhaps an opportunity to allow local businesses or citizens, private citizens, to do like and adopt the spot and maintain their section of the, the Greenway or parts of the park or things like that, to sort of get the community involved and also lessen the sort of burden on the city?
Well, I'm not, I can't speak for the park board for adopt the spots and parks. I'm not sure what the policy is exactly, but we, DPW has been working with the Greenway Advisory Committee, Kenny Curran and Ron Napoli Sr., who dedicated a lot of time to this project, the entire committee has, but that, there's also the Friends of the Greenway. We would look into some programs like that where you could have a community group take active part in maintenance or cleaning. But again, like we planned, the vegetation is going to be low maintenance variety. That's the goal.
Yeah, that's always the case, and I'm working on a project right now that, that the municipality wants to build it, but does not want to maintain. There's 11 miles and 11 miles of lawn mowing on both sides, and with these projects, there's always a way, and it starts with, I mean, this one's starting even better because it already has the Friends of the Greenway, who put in tons of time already, will certainly be sponsoring this from a maintenance standpoint, I would imagine. But typically, it is all hands on deck, and there's various avenues. Certain Greenways that we've done, it's actually a steward in front of X amount of linear feet, and they have 30 people come out on cleanup day, and they'll, they'll do it once over, and they typically do it twice a year, and it's, that's all it really takes. It's kind of self-leasing. But, and, and, but there's, there's a number of ways to, to, you know, cut a skinny cat, so to speak, or divide the pizza up so that it's not so daunting to the municipality. And so it usually becomes a fraction of the maintenance comes back to the city. The Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts are always eagle projects all along the way. The benches start fading, coming in, any brick, paper patios, all of a sudden, it's projects within this project. This is just the bones of it. It'll take on a life of its own, hopefully.
Okay, no, and I thank you for that because that was kind of, my next question was, what has been your experience with similar type of projects in other communities, so?
The one thing, also, this, the passive park, we're looking at natural materials that are, we realize the fact that Parks Department's not going to go down in there. So anything that we're proposing is stone bench or, you know, natural features that can't be vandalized, you know, to the extent practical.
All right. And this would be, again, this would be the same as, once it's done, the park portion, any other city park under the purview of our, our very diligent, able park board?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Porzio, thanks for being here. I just have a quick question. I'm a little thrown off with the, with the pictures, with the presentation. When was actually the last time that a presentation was done on Phase One of this project?
There was a public, public meeting in June of 2014?
It was, I believe it was 2014, that's.
So the, the same slides that we, that we just went through were presented back in 2014?
They've been updated a little bit. They have been updated. The design of the road, the project from South Main on Platts Mill, when we had tighter budget, that design had changed, and it was recently rechanged because of the addition of the repurposed funds, where we can actually build the separate designated bike path.
Okay, so that's immediately coming up north from Niagara Falls, all the way up to Eagle Street, right?
Yes.
So I had never seen, is it safe for me to say that I had never seen South Main Street being divided with the guardrail and the Greenway on one side and then losing two, two lanes?
Again, if, I believe it was in 2014 is when the, we had the public presentation. We also had a public information meeting at, at Wentz, but that's always really been the design. That hasn't changed. I mean, the basic, like Steve said, the bones are there, it's.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure that I, I know what I'm going to approve.
Right, the city.
So, and you mentioned that, that there's some sort of funding that we just, that just got recently allocated that will, will allow us to go back to the original design. So please try to get, try to explain what that, that is.
The, the repurposed funding is federal funding, similar to what we have for our project, that other cities didn't use. It was going to be taken back by the federal government. The COG took the initiative and grabbed that money basically for the city to put towards our Greenway.
Okay, but that didn't have an effect on, on the design?
No, that, but that did allow us, as I explained earlier, we, the project was sort of, here's what we want to design, oh, but we only have this much money. Usually you, if you're going to design a project, you say, "How much money do I have? And then what can I get for that?" So we were stuck with these pictures of what it was going to be as time went by and the numbers became real, because RBA's, I'm sorry, Alta's original feasibility study with all their, they have cost estimates, all the footnote, cost estimates have footnote, within 30% to 50% up or down. So that was the price range, and RBA came on board, it became real.
I also have a follow-up question on that famous retaining wall. I'm going to be honest with you. From this side, to hear you say that if the wall falls, the responsibility falls on the state, that doesn't, it just doesn't sound right to me. It doesn't sound correct, that I, you know, I'm going to move forward approving $9.5 million, and then if the wall falls, who stopped the project? Was it, was it the DOT that stopped? Who, who said to stop the project due to that retaining wall?
The project, it was a discussion between this engineering department and ConDOT about having, trying to coordinate efforts for have them rebuild the wall as part of this project or pay for the project. ConDOT internally could not decide what to do, whether they were going to do that or even if they could, and we've since learned other projects, that might be a questionable practice that could actually do that.
Okay, so, so the, the project did not, it wasn't stopped so that they can find a solution? Because it sounds to me like we have not found a solution. So we're going to move forward with the project, and we are still going to have an issue with that retaining wall?
We may have an issue, yes, but the, the major hold on the project was the archaeological process. We did an investigation. If you find something, you have to do a further investigation. We're doing now a Phase Three, which will be done in the spring, hopefully next spring. That won't affect the design process because it's, but it did affect ConDOT, prevented ConDOT from giving us authorization to start final design. So basically, we're sitting on our hands until we got this memorandum of agreement between the city and the state about what we were going to do to, it's basically called mitigation, mitigating any adverse effects. And as Steve mentioned, I think this will be a highlight of the park that we can, this is going to be, it's designated, I believe it was a fishing camp. There's very few Native American sites in Waterbury, in the valley, they've been disturbed. So this will be another aspect, appealing aspect that will attract people. One thing we did learn is this happens often with undisturbed property. Brookfield started their Greenway in 1999 through native, undisturbed land. I believe they just finished it. Watertown was building a portion of their trail, and they actually changed their plan to put it in the old trolley bed because it's been disturbed. Nogatuck built theirs along Route Eight, and it's all disturbed, so we're.
I, I understand, you know, unexpected. I, I understand that. I'm just a little, I'm concerned. And I'll give you credit, every time you stand up there, and every, every time anyone from the city stands up there, you're on point. You are prepared, you, you know, you let us know what's going on, and you say how it is. And, and I'm confident that what, what's being done is being done in the proper way. I, I have an issue with safety. You, you can't, you can't tell me that the, the wall may fall. I, I, I have to make a decision here with the safety of those individuals that will be walking and riding on those, on the, on that, on that Greenway, so.
Yeah, no, if I could see it.
Could you, could you get me over to the other side, please?
Yeah, well, what had happened was part of the, the delay or the halt in the job was ConDOT saying, "We need to reevaluate internally the integrity of this wall," and they, I hate to say dragging their feet internally on what to do or how to do it, what avenue to do, do we do it before, do we do it after? And at a certain time, they said, "Listen, we understand, we don't want to hold up the city's project and lose, have them lose federal funding, so listen, go do it, we're not going to hold you up. Go do what you need to do to do your project. We need to figure it out internally." So we will continue to work with them and, and determine what or define what they are doing with the solution, whether that is incorporating, you know, improvements into our project or they're going to come after. They know that there's a problem within their right of way they've identified. They're not going to let us build and watch it collapse. They're just said, "You have permission to go ahead. Don't wait for us to, to, you know, figure out the bureaucracy of what we need to do for the wall." So they really just gave us permission to continue and, and not, not be halted by their process. So they'll catch up, they'll do whatever they have to do. That's what I think.
When, when was the last time that we received or we requested official communication from, from the DOT about this wall?
I believe it was with a few months. It was in this early spring, because I point-blank asked them, "Can we proceed? What is the, give me a status update."
So it was.
My understanding is this, is this correct? And they said, "Yes, you are to proceed with your project. We are reviewing it internally."
Okay, all right.
Personally, I don't believe the wall has an imminent danger of collapsing. I know the city engineer was concerned about public safety. He was also trying to, you know, politics, get everybody on board to work together to come to a solution.
All right, well, it sounds like it's, you know, some, some sort of danger in there, but I'm sure, I am sure, I'm 100% confident that the city will not make a decision to move forward on something if you found out or if you felt that there's a safety issue. That's what I'm trying to get to. If you tell me, Victor, there are no safety concerns, we can move forward, that's what you're there for, and then, you know, I trust that you make, you're making the right decision. So I have no, no, I have no reason to doubt that.
As an active member of the YMCA and running for the 13.1 Live Strong program, we run three times a week, twice a week, I go, I go to Middlebury, I go to Southington, we go to Cheshire. I want to be running on the Greenway in Waterbury. I would run there if it wasn't safe.
That's good for me.
I want to interrupt here, since I'm not a runner.
You, you can walk on it.
Should be. I understand the confusion with all this. That retaining wall's been the same condition that it's been in that I know of over the last 30 years. It is, it, it did come up as an issue. ConDOT has examined it and reexamined it several times that I'm aware of. Our traffic engineer's office has as well. From a liability perspective, before we go forward, ConDOT will sign off that they own the wall, and they're responsible for the wall, and they're liable for the wall. Honestly, that wall will probably be the same as it is today, God knows how many decades from now, but I guess I couldn't stand here and swear that it's going to be that way, except that it has been that way, and it hasn't been labeled a priority by ConDOT to fix it as a safety or hazardous concern. They know this, what this project is, and they haven't, and they've told us to proceed ahead. They know people are going to be walking and riding bikes, and the traffic flow pattern's going to change, and they told us to go ahead and proceed.
Thank you. And I have a follow-up question. Mr. LeBlanc can probably help me out on here. I just want to, I think that it is important to, to understand, and everyone who's watching and listening, we are requesting the $17.5 million in bonding, but how does that, how does that work, Mike? We have to get the approval for, for 100% funding of, of our bonding, and then whatever we receive from state or federal kind of gets deducted, right? Is that how it works?
That's correct. For all the authorizations that are before you this evening, which total, and I'll round out, 17.5 million, there is anticipated committed grant assistance, both on the state and federal end, for approximately 10.3 million of that authorization, projecting a net local bonding commitment of $7.1 million from our, our committed bonding repayment from a local bonding standpoint. You're correct, we seek the authorization in total for the project. It's tied in with the capital appropriation. We do not bond in advance for any of these projects. We essentially incur the debt obligations or the sale of bonds as the projects are proceeding, and we absolutely factor in any and all state and federal assistance that comes in. So again, at the end of the day, the burden on the debt service of the city is based on that net amount, that again, you know, we classify it as our local commitment towards these projects. The authorizations, you know, not all of them, but many of them, you know, they've gone through a vetting process, and tied into that process is, you know, what type of assistance are we able to garner towards these projects, both on the state and federal end? And as is the case with the Greenway project, when you look at the East Liberty project, the East Liberty Bridge, there's a 50% match on the state end for that project, and certainly for any of the school projects, there's a 75% to 78% reimbursement rate that's tied in from the state through their school construction program.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further questions? Alderman Brunelli?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Porzio, I recall three, four years ago, we had questions on that area about the snow removal, the access gates, and how to protect that property on South Main. Do people own those buildings? How much access would somebody have to come through there? Has anything been changed since we last spoke?
The main thing that's been changed is we've been authorized to proceed with final design. Basically, because we didn't have the authorization, RBA could not work on the design. They couldn't bill us, or if they billed us, we'd have to pay without the benefit of the funding. So nothing was done while we were waiting to get final design. But working with the owners and the good offices of the Greenway Committee and RBA, you know, we will try to address their concerns. I mean, this, we want this to be a win-win.
Because the people that own the property in that area are quite concerned about break-ins from the back of the building, and I was just wondering how about the gate and the lighting, if there's cameras in that area?
Well, the Greenway itself is a dust to dawn, I mean, dawn to dusk, sorry, operation. There's not going to be lighting, it's not going to be encouraged to be used at nighttime. The gates will be secure, I would imagine, and high enough where they're going to not, I believe, I would like to see them, high enough where people can't hop over them. I mean, anyone could walk behind the businesses. But Greenways in general do serve to decrease crime. Obviously nighttime would be a concern, but we do plan to work with the owners, some come to the meetings. I plan to reach out to them and have them come to more of the Greenway Committee meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. President. My question would be directed towards Michael Blank. Is there any concern that the state may not fund some of this due to the state of the economy?
I think is, I guess there's no absolute guarantees, but proceeding forward with each of these projects are going to be tied to having locked in the grant awards, the grant agreements associated with each of these projects. The, the process may be a little bit different for each one, but at the end of the day, you know, essentially proceeding forward is contingent upon those grant funding sources being fully secured.
Thank you.
All right. Mike, did you have something you wanted to do as well? Yeah, it's not, it's not part of this, the presentation was listed just as the Greenway, but we do have all of these projects on the agenda this evening. So Mike Gilmore, who's the Blight Specialist, I think just has a quick slideshow he wants to do about the money he's looking for with respect to abandoned properties.
Good evening. The mayor suggested that we just remind everybody that the money's being put to good use. So, put together a quick slideshow for you guys. Some of the buildings, you see some of the numbers are high in a couple of the years. One of those years might have been Warner Gardens, where we took down a lot of dilapidated buildings, it was a private job, but they were blighted, so we counted them in. So I'll just give you a quick rundown of what we've done out here. This is Lounsbury Street, as you see, that was a tremendously bad fire. Four buildings burned, this is from actually a drone shot that we put in there, and I'll just run through the rest of the slides here for you. Bike Task Force meets every Tuesday morning. We've been meeting since the mayor's been in office, and this is where all the recommendations come out of. It's not one person, it's a collective group making all the decisions.
You need music, Mike, it's too-
As you can see, a lot of the befores are tremendous fires that happened, and they had to be taken down right away. But all the afters are very good, and we try to maintain the lots as much as we can now, once the buildings are down, or put them to good use. And so far for this year, we're up to 12 already. 10 of them were done by the city, and two were private. And we have, from the bonding that we've got over the past years, we have $32,000 remaining. So as you can see, the good work that's been done, and we're asking for some more to continue the good work. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, with that, the next item on the agenda would be public speaking. So anyone who wishes to address the board on any issue, please sign up with the city sheriff. Again, please state your name and address for the record, and there's a five-minute limit, I will give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker tonight from 96 Downstreet, Martin Spring.
Yeah, I guess I ran out of things to say, right? Anyways, Martin Spring, 96 Downstreet. I just want to say, today is 9/11, we all got to keep them, people in our hearts and forever, because they went through traumatic times, especially the families. I know on that day, September 11th, 2001, I was working at the polls, and I was helping some people, and I was asked to go to help, and I did. And I was really, really, you know, unbelievably could not believe or even comprehend what was going on, because I didn't know if we were being attacked from another country or whatever. Nobody knew, and you know, the news reports were coming out all over the place. And we found out later that our son, who was at the time in the United States Navy, and he was on the USS Abraham Lincoln, and he was stationed in Seattle, Washington, and his ship left port, and we couldn't hear from him from probably about two weeks, three weeks. So, we were pretty upset about that. So, finally, you know, we found out that he was doing okay, he was sent to the Persian Gulf. So you people who are veterans, you could appreciate that, and I know, you know, that's something that we can all keep in our hearts about our veterans, and that they're safe and they come home safe. Also, I wanted to let you know that my son now lives in Houston, Texas, and he was probably about 20 miles away from that storm. I know his family was asked to leave, and because they were letting levees out and they were, the dams were going to burst. So there was like 300 people, and unfortunately, he was one of them, they had to leave. But he called us up the other day, said he's safe. And my daughter's in Georgia, she's not too far from Jacksonville, and I guess it's turned into tropical storm now, Irma, and you know, she seems to be doing okay, I haven't heard from her. So I just want to say, you know, we're concerned about our people down south, whether it be family, or friends, or cousins, or whatever, down in Texas, and also down in Georgia and Florida. Because I do have my brother, he lives down in Florida, and my cousins live down there. So I just want people to know that, that that's what happened on 9/11, and I just want to tell the President, thank you for having a moment of silence there, because I know the misses tonight, we went to Sherwood Island, and that's down in Westport, and we saw the memorial down there. So, if any of you people get a chance, go down to Westport, down toward Greenwich, and you go to Sherwood Island, and you'll see the memorial down there they have constructed for all those poor people who lost their lives. Okay, I normally have too much time. Talking about the Greenway over here, and I'm glad these people are still here, and Mr. Napoli and others, if you could go on the website, you could look for, they install solar lamps for security lighting, and that's all solar in their lamps. And they don't cost a lot of money, you can install them, and they light up all the time, day and night, and you can have them lit up at night too, for security reasons. So that's something you might want to look into. Okay. And as far as the subject of Board of Education approval of the meeting of September 7th agreement, New England Home Care Corporation for two-year period, not to exceed $227,230.50, try if we can to save as much money as possible. I don't have a lot to say on that, because obviously, I don't have a lot of information in front of me. And as far as the subject of Board of Education approval of the regular meeting September 7th, professional services agreement with JC Vending Distribution LLC for a three-year period, placement stock and maintenance of vending snacks, machines and various water very public schools. Again, when my kids were in school, we always placed a lot of emphasis on them not eating junk food. So how much is this going to cost? And make sure that we're not feeding the kids junk food, maybe nutritious foods, if you will, because, you know, we don't want the kids to become obese and get sick later on, and, and walk around with a lot of health problems later on, like, you know, diabetes and whatever that release-
One minute, Mr. Spring.
Oh wow, already, to being overweight. Okay, and I just want to tell Selpor, the only gentleman, thanks for the presentation, it's a good one, I do appreciate it. And one more thing, so they only have a minute, I'm going to go real fast on this. I had this already down over here, oh man, where'd it go? Sorry about that, Mr. President. Guess my time's running up, the clock's running out over here. Okay, on, as far as the Civil Service Commission notification promotional exams, I'd like to see more minorities should be applying for many of these new positions, if they are, especially if they're qualified. I don't, I don't have time to obviously go down to the list, but if we can make sure that these are Vice President Boe, Buck Hill, Pre-K, and Cross Elementary School, and Enliment, and also Maloney Magnet School, North End, Middle School, Regan, Rotella State Street School, Wallace School, and Washington Elementary School-
That's time, Mr. Spring.
Okay, the bottom line is, I thank you for your time, and I'm, I'm really, you know, concerned about that, because we should be looking at more minorities to work within the school system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I just wanted to thank the board for the moment of silence tonight, and, you know, I, for me, it was a very emotional day. I, I was a junior at Sacred Art High School. I had a loved one that was supposed to be at work that day, called out, he was a, he was in charge of a security firm that was in charge of security of the building. And as the day unfolded, he was in contact with many of his employees, they were in the building at the time, actually talking to a few of them as the first tower went down. You know, today, I, I know, like every year, he doesn't even turn on the TV, doesn't, you know, he's, he's had some post-traumatic stress due to that. But, why do I bring this up? You know, as tragic as that day was for so many of us, and horrifying, what has come about in the years since, I've seen people across this country working together, I've seen people in the city of Waterbury working together. Not a lot of people know this, but as the day unfolded, our responders, some of our responders, they had the day off, loaded into a bus, went down to Home Depot. Home Depot gave them everything and anything that they needed, or that they thought that New York needed at the time, for nothing. They loaded that bus up, and they were the first response unit from outside the city and state in New York to get there as it unfolded. And, why is this important? You know, we, we read in the paper and on the news, you know, a lot of people like to talk about the, unfortunately, the bad things that happen here, but we have so much good. You know, with the hurricanes that have happened, we have so many people in the city that have turned out to donate their time, donate their money. You know, a lot of it doesn't make it to the news, and people that are doing this aren't doing it to get on the news. But we have so much good out of this city that I wish other cities and towns in the state of Connecticut would recognize. I mean, quite frankly, in the Noggetuck Valley, if there's a fire or anything else, just like every other town or city, Waterbury's the first, maybe sometimes second, to ask if they need help responding. And, you know, we saw during that time, the camaraderie with the public, with the, the outpouring of affection that this nation had for our first responders, and the honor that they took in doing what they do. I think in the last few years, we still have a good portion of that camaraderie, but we've lost a little bit of it, unfortunately, to, you know, what people see on TV, and what people seem to believe that the, the people that don't appreciate what our first responders do. But our first responders-
One minute, Mr. Pelletier.
Do so much. And I think that the city's starting to come together more and more and thank our first responders. And I think that we need to show up in more numbers and thank them. I mean, yes, we need to hire more cops, but we need to thank the cops and the firemen and the EMS people that are out there every day, sometimes tired for working double shifts. But, we need to come together, and we can't let the people that thought that they were going to break us that day, break us. So thank you.
Next speaker from 11th Stuben Street, Lawrence V. DePillo.
Good evening, Lawrence DePillo, 11th Stuben Street. I have three issues that are on your agenda. First is, agenda's item number eight. With this, I didn't see a map, but it's talking about construction contract for Reedville Drive culvert rehabilitation. And it seems that this project is going to be funded by the state, but through the state municipal revenue sharing account. It's talking about that the contractor removed debris and sediment deposits from inside the culvert, cleaned the interior, repaired deteriorated sections, and installed a liner. My question is, where is this culvert on Reedville Drive? As we know, the state of Connecticut, in I-84 construction, has torn up much of Reedville Drive. And probably, a lot of what's in that culvert is from the construction. And if we're using the state funds, which is for our municipal purposes, why is this being done through that fund? And why wouldn't this be done through I-84 as part of the construction? Since they've been going up and down Reedville with their trucks, everybody's been talking about the sand, the issues. This really should be done as part of their project. Our funds can be used elsewhere in the city for culvert and other reconstruction of storm sewers. Doesn't make sense to use this money when it's I-84 construction that is probably responsible for that culvert being full of debris. The second item is item number 11. And that's the approval of JC Venting Distribution for a three-year period. And it seems that we're going in a negative position here by getting less and less, 15% for the first two years, or three years, and then 13% every year thereafter. What's more disturbing is not, is the, the percentage is disturbing. And I would believe that if we let other people know that that's what we're being reimbursed, we may be getting a lot more bids than just one bid. However, I don't know how many of you are aware, that not $1 from this fund is going to the Student Activity Fund. The students, and the principals, and teachers are utilizing those vending machines in those schools, and none of that money goes back to those schools. Now you would ask where that money's going. Well, that money's going to the general food services account. And it's the general food services account that is providing the Board of Education with all the food that they eat at every single one of their meetings and workshops. So we're feeding the, the Board of Education members on the backs of the students, and the teachers, and the principals who are using the vending machines. 15% is one issue. Whoever came up with the policy of taking this money away from the children, away from the Student Activity Fund, I think the Board of Alderman ought to order that be reversed. Let the Board of Education bring their own lunches. They don't need to be fed on the backs of the children. The last item is item number 14. And it's the city of Waterbury's entering into a home investment partnership program between the city of Waterbury and Waterbury Community Investment LLC. This is on 54 Central Avenue. This property was purchased three years ago as part of a probate settlement, and was purchased for $158,000, and is providing the city with $5,233 in taxes a year.
One minute, Mr. DePillo.
Thank you. My concern is that they're asking the city, from what I'm reading here, to commit to half a million dollars, so that we can provide six units of affordable housing. Two questions. $154,000 piece of property, $500,000 in renovations for six units? And then the second question is, is this property going to remain on the tax rolls? Or are we going to fund a half a million dollars through whatever fund this is? And then, if you look at this LLC, it's one of half a dozen LLCs tied together. Is there going to be an attempt, after this is done, to claim this as a nonprofit, take it off the tax rolls, and lose not only the income we're currently getting, but the, what should be about $20,000 a year in taxes, once that property's rehabilitated?
That's time, Mr. DePillo.
Thank you. Hopefully you're going to ask that of the suppliers tonight, and thank you very much.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. With that, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the meeting of Monday, August 21st, 2017. Is there a motion with respect to-
Motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of Monday, August 21st, 2017.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Giacetti, and second by Alderman Napoli. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the minutes are approved. I don't see the mayor here at this point, so, I know he was here earlier. With that, we will recess into our committees. We'll do everything in here tonight, and we'll do finance first, and then intergovernmental. Thank you.
I call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Item number four, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve refunds for overpayments to the following individuals. Anthony Nunes, $2,638.77. Elias Properties Meriden LLC, $398.18. Lima Reese, $531- Lima Reese, $531.77. Total refunds, $3,568.72.
So moved? Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Alderman Sherman?
Thank you. I'm curious about the $2,600 reimbursement for, it looks like, overpayment and leak adjustment. Is there anyone that can answer a question here concerning this? I'd like to know if there's any way that Public Works or the Water Department is able to monitor this kind of leak to try and alleviate residents from having to overpay and seek reimbursement. I guess next time we'll have someone here from Public Works or from the Water Department?
You can request that.
That would be great, if we could have someone here next time we have these reimbursements to residents. Thank you.
Okay. We'll request that they come to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
That's a pretty substantial. I assume this is a homeowner, not necessarily a business. That's a pretty substantial amount of money that I think has probably put the person in a bind. And I just would hope that they could answer a question concerning that.
Further discussion?
If I can just chime in, I spoke with Mr. Carver before. He is going to be, coming to us. I spoke to him at a Department of Public Works meeting because the refunds seem to be often and some of them are very high. He was going to come to us at some point and hopefully update the way they do the leak refunds. So, it will be getting addressed, but I think we should invite him here to speak about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item number seven, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the four-year contract with the Tech Health Ventures, Inc., for retiree drug subsidy program. Total contract expense, $60,000, as submitted by Karen Lang, Pension and Benefits Manager.
So moved? Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Alderman Sherman?
Thank you very much. My question, do we have an estimate of potential savings with this contract?
It depends on the, I'm Karen Lang, Pension and Benefits Manager. It depends on the claim levels that are filed for each plan year. So, the reimbursement that we get from the government depends on, one, the claim volume, and, two, they change their formula every year. So, for example, there's a minimum threshold, so if you only have 100 bucks worth of pharmacy, it doesn't go in the mix. It has to be above a certain threshold. And then, there's a cap on it as well. And we pull from two sources. So, there are a lot of moving parts, but we've been averaging on 800,000, give or take, every year for the last, since 2006.
And that's been a savings of that much?
Yes, we recover that money. So, in other words, we pay claims, we use a third party, which is Express Scripts. And then, once the plan year settles, there's a lag so that they can go ahead and collect their rebates from the pharmaceutical manufacturers. Rebates offset, and then the formula becomes the net of that. We get roughly 22% of the spend on those retiree plans from the federal government.
This doesn't affect anything that the retirees have to do to get their prescriptions? This is just all on the back end?
Backroom, it's backroom.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number nine. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve refunds for the following unused permits. Permit number PR20170001883245 Branford Street, Branford Avenue, $315. Permit numbers PR2016000262193935 South Main Street and PR20160002620923 South Main
So moved? Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item number 15. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the resolution to issue up to $15 million of refunding bonds to refund the city's 2009 Series General Obligation Outstanding Bonds as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Finance Director.
So moved? Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Standing Committee. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $16,043, submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso.
So moved? Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All business. Is it the committee's pleasure to do these all as a group, or do we want to take them individually?
As a group, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the following bond authorizations as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. A, demolition of abandoned projects to address blight in the amount of $1 million. B, Waterbury Greenway phase in the amount of $9,500,000. C, various road improvements, milling and repaving of streets in the amount of $2 million. D, partial roof replacement, Sprague Elementary School, in the amount of $280,000. E, East Liberty Bridge replacement in the amount of $3,500,000. F, installation of elevators, Washington and Bunker Hill Elementary Schools, in the amount of $1,185,000.
I move to approve all business. Item number 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, and 1F. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Where we are adjourned? We'll call tonight's intergovernmental meeting to order. First item on the agenda is item number three from Diane C. Toulon, Housing and Community Planning Program Director. Substantial amendment for the Consolidated Plan 2013 through 2018 and authorization to enter into collaboration agreement with the Waterbury Housing Authority. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve, item three.
Second.
Discussion. Alderman Cummings?
Thank you. Good evening. Just two questions for you. What is this new rule that's referenced, new final rule? And what happens if we do not extend?
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Diane C. Toulon, the Housing and Community Planning Program Director for the City of Waterbury Community Development Program. The new rule, which was passed in 2015, replaces the previous rule. Whenever a participant in the federal community development block program or the housing authority programs undertakes a five-year plan, the last time we did that, we did what was called the assessment of analysis of impediments. This new rule takes the place of that. It was passed in 2015. If we did not do what we want to do, which is extend our five-year plan by two years and collaborate with the housing authority, it's HUD's recommendation that we're doing this, we would be one of the earlier submitters in the state, and our plan would have to be done in 2018. And quite frankly, there would not be enough time to do it.
Why would there not be enough time to do it?
To do the brand-new affirmative fair housing plan.
Yes.
It's a very, I was going to bring up the book, it's about five inches in depth. As a matter of fact, I'm going tomorrow to Providence, Rhode Island for a training that they've just begun the trainings for this process. So, it is quite, going to be quite involved and quite elaborate.
So, other communities are extending as well?
Yes, the City of Bridgeport is actually, we would be the only submitter in 2018, but the City of Bridgeport would be an early submitter for November of 2017. And again, based upon HUD's recommendation, they are also collaborating with their housing authority and will be extending that period by two years.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Can you stay up for item five?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, from Diane C. Toulon, Housing and Community Planning Program Director for the City of Waterbury. Three-year contract, Curtain Motor Livery Service Incorporated for senior shuttle services. The term will be from October 1, 2017, through September 30, 2020. One contract value is $118,043, funded from the CD Year 43 Annual Action Plan and $50,000 from the city's general fund. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve, item five.
Second.
Discussion. Alderman Napoli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Diane, thank you for being here.
You're welcome, thank you.
Does the recent increase in fuel affect any of these costs?
No, this was bid on a per-ride basis. And as you see, we had two bids that were submitted. So, no, there's no, there was no provision in there for an over, during, under type of thing.
Wonderful, thank you.
Alderman Cummings?
Thank you. Curtain has previously provided this service for us. Have we been pleased with their service in the past?
Yes, we have. I mean, we, every year, we conduct a consumer survey and we choose about 200 random riders. And for the most part, people are very thrilled with the service. They realize what a wonderful privilege this is. The only problems we've had in the past, and we've had them with both providers, sometimes there's a little bit of a delay for the pickup. People tend to think of this perhaps as a personal car service, and it's not, because you can imagine that they are juggling other rides that are out there. And so, you know, sometimes that gets to be a bit tricky. But for the most part, I think people are very, very pleased with the service that we've had.
About how many of our seniors in Waterbury utilize this service?
Well, at any given time, um-
On average?
I would say 350 to 400. With this changeover again to the previous vendor, we're doing a brand-new senior shuttle card. We just ordered 500 of them from the printing shop. We have a meeting at the center for the 21st that will be the luncheon speaker, so we're bringing in the new vendor to get people interested. And, you know, it's a different number than they've had for the past three years and so on. We'll be mailing out those cards and then we'll also be doing intake that day. For example, you could have newer seniors who had never signed up for the card before.
Fantastic. Now, if someone has a complaint about their service, do they go to the senior center or do they contact the company directly? What's their-
They have either option, frankly. I mean, they can do it through us or they can do it with the senior center, or they can contact the vendor directly, definitely. I mean, sometimes, you know, if they want to hear that too, they have to hear sort of the response back.
Fantastic. I'm really glad to see that we're continuing this service. I know it's really important to our seniors. So, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is item number eight, from Thomas F. Crowe, Jr., engineer, civil engineer with Public Works Department. Construction contract with Quadex Linings Systems in the amount of $268,300 for Reedville Drive Culvert Rehabilitation Center.
Motion to approve, item eight.
Second.
Discussion. Alderman Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, thank you for being here. My understanding is that we have asked the state to include this as part of the 84 project and they have declined to do so. Can you apply an S. why?
Paul Bellegamba-
Paul Bellegamba, City Engineer, Department of Public Works.
Bless you.
During the design phase of the I-84 project, this did not come up at that time, as far as I understand. Recently, when we discovered the issue with the culvert, we did approach the subject with them, and they did decline. It's out of the scope of their work.
Is there anything, as you heard in the public speaking earlier, there may be some causally-related incidents between the work that is being done for 84 and this culvert? Has that been explored?
I don't believe that the construction vehicles have impacted this culvert any more than any other traffic there. The culvert's been in place for 75 to 80 years. It's not full of debris. There is some debris in it, but it's corroded from just age, the bottom of it, so it needs to be replaced. And it's a function of its age, not the traffic over.
So the issues that have arisen with this culvert existed prior to the 84 construction? They've been longstanding issues?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the contract, it talks about implementing or installing a geo-polymers structure. Can you explain what that is? Third paragraph.
Thank you. It's basically a concrete coating on the inside of the pipe.
Okay.
I know. It says geo-polymers. It's a proprietary material they use. But they spray it on the inside of the pipe, sort of like a... What do they call it? Shotcrete that you put on a pool?
Okay.
Although it's higher quality and more structurally efficient.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item eight carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is item number 10, from Curie Swain, Board of Education. Subject to the Board of Education's approval at the regular meeting of September 7th, an agreement with New England Home Care, Inc. for a two-year period, starting September 12th, 2017, to June 30th, 2018, and not to exceed amount of $222,230.50 for nursing services for students with disabilities. Have a motion.
Motion to approve, item 10.
Second.
Discussion. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Baldwin, has the district used New England Home Care in the past, and if so, are you content with their services?
We have used it. Melissa Baldwin-
Could you state your name for the record?
Sure. Melissa Baldwin, Director of Special Education, Waterbury Public Schools. We have used New England Health Care in the past, and we have been very happy with their services. We do use a number of nursing services, because there is such a shortage of medical services available to our students, and we do have a hard time finding nurses for our students.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Could you stay up for item 11? Is that yours?
No, that's not me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is from Curie Swain, Board of Education. Subject to the Board of Education's approval at the regular meeting of September 7th, a professional services agreement with J.C. Vending and Distribution, LLC, for a three-year period, fiscal year 17 and 18. Also carries on to 18 to 19, and 19 to 2020, for the placement, stocking, and maintenance of vending snack machines at various Waterbury public schools. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve, item 11.
Second.
Discussion. Alderman Chiketti.
Hi, Linda. Did you negotiate this contract with them?
No, it's an ITV. Linda Francie, Food Service Director.
I understand that they were the single bidder. Why did we drop from 24% to 15% in the percentage that the city receives?
Well, in addition to that, we're receiving approximately a quarter million dollars for only serving healthy foods in the vending machines.
Who's paying us that?
We're getting that from the state of Connecticut.
Not from J.C. Vending?
No. No. We're only getting the commission from J.C. Vending.
How much will that affect what we will get this year at 24% compared to what we will get in the future at 15 and 13%?
We don't feel that it's going to affect us... We are... Because we're getting the quarter million dollars from the state, and we're also selling foods à la carte on the line, that's making up for that difference for the most part, within a few thousand dollars.
Have we been getting the $250,000 all along?
We have been.
So would it still, if we were getting $250,000 plus 24%, now we're getting $250,000 plus 15%?
Well, but also, one of the things that we have to keep in mind... Oh, sorry. Adam Shaven, accountant, Food Service Department. What we have noticed is that the participation in the vending machines, because of the restrictions that are associated with the healthy food provision to get the $250,000, participation at vending machines has gone down. We're not getting as much from them anyway. We're making up that money on the lines. Students are saying, you know, if I'm either going to get it at the line or I'm going to get it in a vending machine, it's basically the same snacks, different brands or things like that, but basically the same thing. So they might as well just pick it up while they're going through line.
All of the snacks sold in the vending machines and via à la carte lines have to be on the healthy food list, the Connecticut state-
So that's why it's gone down. They don't want to eat soy.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. Did anybody look into the... What are the surrounding towns, or who were the surrounding towns? I realize in the contract it said they were the only bidder. Who serviced in Wilkett, Middlebury, Nogatuck, Southbury?
I'm sorry, I'm not aware of that.
Nobody looked into that? I mean, there's got to be somebody else selling water and snacks in our surrounding area. But you didn't... Nobody looked into it? Okay. Could you look into it in the future? So, maybe we can get another bidder anyway? Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? I have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 13 is going back to Corporation Council, so we can't table that. Next item on the agenda is item 14.
Just RPF that? What'd I do with it?
Okay. Correction. Item 13 will be in RPF.
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Item 13's clear. Item number 14.
That's what happens when you can't see.
Item 14 is from Tina Lubis, Home Manager, Office of Community Development, City of Waterbury. Waterbury Community Investment, LLC, subsidiary of Mutual Housing of South Central Connecticut, doing business as Neighborhood Works New Horizons at 54 Central Avenue in the City of Waterbury. Home contract in an amount not to exceed $500,000.
Motion to approve item 14.
Second.
Discussion. Alderman Cummings.
Thank you. My understanding in providing these funds that there are restrictions that come with the funding, including an eligibility to transfer the properties later on. Can you apply to that, please?
Correct. There's a couple different restrictions. There's a restriction on who you can rent the units to. They have to be low-income residents. There's a cap on the rent that could be charged. And if it is going to be sold, it has to remain affordable for a certain number of years. So in this case, it'll most likely be 15-year affordability period.
And these restrictions are all governed by the City of Waterbury, and they have to provide financials upon request to ensure that they are actually meeting these requirements. Is that correct?
Correct. They're actually HUD requirements, and we monitor them on an annual basis to make sure that the tenants that they're renting to are qualified tenants, and that they're charging the correct rents.
And what happens if they are in violation of the agreement?
Then they would be in default of their contract.
And at that point, do they have to repay? Do they demand the full note?
That could... That could happen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Further discussion, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tina, is this project going to resemble or going to be something like what took place at the Gaffney Place area, or is it just going to be next to it?
It's right on the corner of Central and Gaffney, so as you already know, Mutual Housing redid all of Gaffney-
Right.
And two houses on... On the left side of Gaffney, and then two houses on Central, so this is going to be right-
So this will be a similar concept of that project?
Exactly.
All right. That was a great project, so I'm glad this is going forward. Thank you.
Alderman Chiketti.
Will they be paying taxes on these houses?
Yes, they will.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 14 passes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item 16, from Michael LeBlanc, Finance Director, City of Waterbury, regarding electricity supplier agreements with Constellation Energy, Direct Energy, and Mint Energy. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve, item 16.
May... I'm sorry to interrupt. May I offer a couple friendly amendments to the resolution? Since we began this process, we've been noticed that Mint Energy has withdrawn their interest in participating in the upcoming reverse auction. So I'd like to have Mint Energy deleted from the resolution. And if you could be so kind to incorporate the following language. Corporation Council's recommended that this be included in the resolution, that the approval be contingent upon and applicable to only the one electric supplier selected to provide retail electricity supply service to the city following a reverse auction scheduled for September 14th. I can provide this to you if you'd like.
All in favor? Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I withdraw the original motion, and I'll make a motion that we approve the Constellation Energy and Direct Energy with the proper amendments from Corporation Council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions for Mr. LeBlanc? Hearing none, I have a motion approved and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our business tonight. I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.
And with that, we can return to the... Excuse me. Regular order of business. With respect to... The following items are on the consent calendar. Item number three is on consent to approve the substantial amendment for consolidated plan 2013 to 2018, an authorization enter into a collaboration agreement with the Waterbury Housing Authority. Item four is on consent to approve refunds for overpayments to WIT Anthony Nunez, Elias Properties Merit and LLC, $398.18. Lee Maurice, $531.77, for a total of $3,568.72 submitted by the Board of Public Works. Item five is on consent to approve a three-year contract with Curtain Motor Livery Service, Inc. for senior shuttle services, the term running from October 1, 2017, to September 30, 2020. One contract value... Year-one contract value of $118,043, with $68,043 funded from the CD year 43 Annual Action Plan, and $50,000 from the city's general fund. Item number seven is on consent to approve a four-year contract with Intech Health Ventures, Inc. for the retiree drug subsidy program with total contract expense of $60,000. Item number eight is on consent to approve a construction contract with Quadex Lining Systems in the amount of $268,300 for the Reedville Drive Culver Rehabilitation. Item number nine is on consent to approve refunds for the following unused permits. Permit with respect to 245 Bamford Avenue for $315. For 541 Piedmont Street for $202.50. For 73 Wilkett Street, $652.50. 366 Wilkett Street, $427.50. 935 South Main Street and 923 South Main Street for $315. Item number 10 is on consent to approve an agreement with New England Home Health Care, Inc. for a two-year period, September 12, 2017, to June 30, 2018, and not to exceed amount of $227,230.50 for nursing services for students with disabilities. Item number 11 is on consent to approve a professional services agreement with J.C. Vending and Distribution, LLC, for a three-year period, fiscal year 17, 18, fiscal year 18, 19, fiscal year 19, 20, for the placement, stocking, and maintenance of vending snack machines at various Waterbury public schools. Item number 13 is on consent to receive and place on file. Item number 14 is on consent to approve the Waterbury Community Investment, LLC, subsidy of mutual housing of South Central Connecticut, doing business as Neighborhood Works New Horizons, 54 Central Avenue, home contract in an amount not to exceed $500,000. Item number 15 is on consent to approve a resolution to issue up to $15 million of refunding bonds to refund the city's 2009 Series General Obligation Outstanding Bonds. Item number 16 is on consent to approve the electricity supplier agreements with Constellation Energy, as amended by the language provided by Mr. LeBlanc pursuant to the Corporation Council in the committee meeting. Old Business, item number one is on consent to approve the following bond authorizations. Demolition of abandoned properties to address blight in the amount of $1 million. Waterbury Greenway Phase 1 in the amount of $9,500,000. Various road improvements for milling and repaving of streets in the amount of $2 million. Partial roof replacement, Sprague Elementary School, in the amount of $280,000. East Liberty Bridge replacement in the amount of $3,500,000. And installation of elevators at the Washington and Bunker Hill Elementary Schools in the amount of $1,185,000. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made by Alderman Chiketti, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, Mike.
Just on the item in relation to the electricity supply, you mentioned Constellation and also Direct Energy.
I'm sorry. Constellation Energy, Direct Energy, Mint Energy withdrew. So it's Constellation and Direct Energy with the language supplied by Mr. LeBlanc at the committee meeting. With that correction, are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar as read? Hearing none, a yes vote will be to approve the consent calendar, and no vote to disapprove it. We'll do a roll call vote.
Alderman Mernelli.
Yes.
Alderman Chiketti. Alderwoman Cottrell.
Yes.
Alderwoman Cummings. Alderman DiGiovincarlo.
Yes.
Alderman Giacomi.
Yes.
Alderman Guerrero.
Yes.
Alderman Hadley.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Napoli.
Yes.
Alderman Padula.
Yes.
Alderman Sherman.
Yes.
Alderman Pernaruski.
Yes.
14 approved consent calendar.
Thank you. The motion carries. The consent calendar is approved as read. With respect to standing committees, the chair would recognize Alderman Hadley as chair of the Finance Committee.
Mr. President, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments-
overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $16,043.43 submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Lopez, seconded by Alderman Dijo Van Carlo. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. The ayes have. The motion carries. The refunds are approved. Before we go, I do know there was a discussion, I think in the Finance Committee earlier this evening about the steps taken to mitigate some of these water refunds. So, I'll try to get Mr. Carver to attend the next meeting, or the next meeting...if not the next meeting, the one after that, that's convenient, to sort of address how those things are dealt with. Is there anything further for the good of the order? Hearing none, Alderman Brunelli.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Alderman Chiketti. No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay, Paul.